Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting at the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, February 7th. And I will note for the record that Commissioner Githens and I are present in the Nat U Hill Room, and Commissioner Jones is joining us via Teams. And with that, we will begin with our public statement.
Thank you. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCOC.
Thank you so much. With that, we will move on to department updates. Ms. Kelly is here. Good morning.
Good morning. So just a few updates today. COVID hospital admissions and wastewater detections are continuing to decline in our area. JN1 is still the primary COVID variant that's circulating. Influenza activity is currently at moderate levels. We still have COVID, flu, and RSV for those 60 and older available at the public health clinic.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Is there still vaccine, the RSV vaccine, for infants? Do you know anything?
Not within our public health clinic. We're only able to offer for those 60 and older.
Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you being here. All right. Is there any other departments that wish to offer an update today? Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium. We did want to take a moment to provide an update on our experience last week in Washington, DC, which was amazing. So we were invited by the White House as part of a group of Indiana and Illinois folks to talk about the impact of ARPA Infrastructure and Inflation Reduction Act funding at the local level. And it was a very fast afternoon. It went by very quickly, but we learned a great deal. There were some, a large number of Illinois senators present. We were the only commissioners present. Some social service agency leaders were present. But it was interesting to hear about some really creative programming that's out there and also some keys to the Office of Intergovernment Relations. Tom Perez was there, Pete Buttigieg was there to talk about transportation and also intergovernmental affairs. So it was really an amazing event, and we were really proud to be there to represent Monroe County.
It was amazing, too, to be, like you said, the only commissioners from Indiana in the room. Made it feel really special. But there are a few things that I took notes while we were there. They indicated that $1.5 billion had been poured into Indiana and Illinois through the Inflation Reduction Act. And of that $1.5 billion, Illinois got $1.4 billion, meaning we in Indiana only got a little over $100 million. But we also heard about the new White House Office for Gun Violence Protection, which was pretty amazing. And one of the things they talked about was the fact that they are providing funding and training for 14,000 new school counselors and psychologists. And as we listen to the numbers in Indiana, that could have a big impact because we really are, I think it's recommended that there be no more than 250 students per counselor, and I think we're at something like 647. And so that money would be really, really useful. We also heard from Mayor Pete that they can give advice on how we can apply for additional money. And as we look at places like, or companies like Enhance and others, there's also money available through the CHIPS, CHIPS in Science Act. And so we need to start to see how we can, you know, enrich people in our own community through those programs.
Absolutely. Commissioner Jones, did you want to add anything?
Well, this was a great opportunity to brag about Monroe County, and we did. And really, the most exciting part was hearing about all the different avenues that are actually open to us and how we can get help accessing them. I think that's what an awful lot of the people there were interested in.
Yeah, absolutely. It was a great venture, and as Commissioner Jones said, we're really proud to be there to represent Monroe County to the federal government. That was very good. All right. So with that, we will move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on the agenda. We ask that commenters limit their statement to three minutes and to let us know whether or not they are Monroe County resident. You may raise your hand in Teams or come up to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Okay. None. We will move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from January 31st, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits?
Not for me.
All right. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the approval of minutes for January 31st, 2024?
Yes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Claims Docket, Accounts Payable, February 7th, 2024, and Payroll, February 9th, 2024.
We have a motion, and I will go ahead and second it. Commissioner Jones's transmission is frozen. I'll go ahead and second that motion. And Bree Gregory, if you could tell us all about it, please.
Absolutely. Good morning. The Accounts Payable Claims Docket for February 7th, 2024 totals $1,260,611.52. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The Payroll Docket for February 9th, 2024 includes $1,495,636.09 in direct costs, and the remaining $640,890 were for indirect costs for a grand total of $2,136,526.09.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
No.
I don't have any others to read through. It took a while.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Okay, seeing none. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of Claims Docket, Accounts Payable, February 7th, 2024, Payroll, February 9th, 2024?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. We don't have any reports today, so we will move on to new business, please.
Yes, I move approval of contract with Cultivate Geospatial Enterprise Service Plan. Fund name, cumulative capital, fund number 1138, in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. I don't know who is here to present on this.
Mr. Baiton is here.
So we have John Baiton from GIS and Greg Crone from TSD tag teaming it for us today.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, just here today to request your support to, I guess, contract with Cultivate Geospatial. I wanted to provide some context of why I think this is important, what we'll get out of it, and then if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And so what we're kind of experiencing currently with our GIS, is this kind of the right flow of things, too? Okay, cool.
You're right on.
Our architecture needs a tune-up, our geospatial architecture. Right now, we're, all of our GIS software is on one machine. We have what's called a single-machine deployment. And to really kind of embrace the growth that we're experiencing with our GIS, we need to expand that to a multi-machine deployment, which really requires a lot of technical expertise to do so. With the signing on of our enterprise license agreement in July of this past year, we've seen an increased use of GIS across Monroe County offices. So this has increased our kind of demand on those machines and our demand in terms of the GIS division. Likewise, we've deployed a public-facing GIS website in, I believe it was early September, late August of this past year, which has been getting a lot of traffic, more than 25,000 hits since its inception. This is providing the public with lots of our GIS applications as well as access to CoolAerial imagery and stuff like that. And so all of these things combined has been creating kind of lags and system crashes with our servers, which is, you know, making disruptions to workflows and things of that nature. So signing on with Cultivate Geospatial, we're going to be getting expertise in system architecture as well as kind of the technical expertise of GIS. They're the ones that are responsible for Hamilton County's Geospatial Division, which is really a stable GIS department. They're also going to assist us with some database integrations. Right now, we're integrating with a handful of databases, but we really want to bring more databases into our GIS, things like LOU Taxing and things of that nature as well that will really allow us to harness the power of our enterprise license agreement along with just GIS across Monroe County. And then finally, they're going to really provide us with some assistance with different types of solutions in terms of asset management and workflows for some of the new departments that are in kind of integrating GIS into their workflows. So that's kind of the why we need it and what we can get from it, so.
Greg Crone, do you have anything you wish to add?
Yes. Over the last year or so, I've really watched our GIS program explode, and that was large in part to your support last year with the expansion of our ESRI program and things like that. The biggest problem with data management is, once you have it, what do you do with all of it? And if you can't put that in usable form, it's not information, it's just data laying on a server. So as we see, just like with the website that they'd set up, 25,000 viewers plus have already hit that and bogged that server down, we have to have a plan. As we expand, we're going to need more data storage, or we're going to need more of this. This is just one more step in that process, and I appreciate the continued support.
Thank you so much. Thank you both. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No, I do appreciate both Mr. Baiton and Mr. Crone coming in to talk with us today, though.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, it's exciting to hear that the public is making such great use of what's being offered to them.
And I found the integration with LOU interesting because that is so pivotal, but also reading through the information on asset management and how GIS can help with that is really critical. So I appreciate that and appreciate you both being here to explain it all for us to the public and help us get a handle on it. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room.
My name is Julie Booz. I'm with Cobblestone Realty, and I can contest to the slowdown of the GIS system. We use that as a business tool that's, we have to have that business tool, and it's very, very important to us and to the public. I mean, we get so much information, and it is, it has grown. I mean, and we give our clients, we tell them to go to it. So I just want to say.
Excellent. All right.
Could you come back every week?
We need cheerleaders. It's awesome. Thank you. That's really, that's really great to hear, and it really, it is interesting to consider the small business support aspect of this and how important it is. So thank you for that. All right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Cultivate Geospatial Enterprise Service Plan?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with Beacon Regarding Expanded Service Continuation. Fund name, American Rescue Plan Act. Fund number, 8950, in an amount of $500,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you tell us all about it, please?
Yes, and you should have received the updated version of the plan we were working on, or the Memorandum of Understanding. We were working with Beacon up until yesterday on trying to get this finalized as well as with Baker Tilly and our auditor's office. So the county commissioners added this project to the plan, and the county council approved this funding. It's kind of come at a different pace than what we expected when we initially, when we initially had those approvals in that they are going to close fairly soon on their property. This agreement is actually to help support the expanded services that they've been providing for the last year through 2024, which will allow them to free up some cash flow in order to put it into their new building. This will allow us to treat them as a beneficiary and not as a subrecipient. It also, if it's not going into the building or the land, there are less hurdles if they ever have to move again. So this has been structured in a way that they continue to provide the services, but also in a way where they, it gives them some flexibility moving forward with their, with their project. And as we all know, they got a substantial grant for that project from the, through the state. I think it's actually started out as federal money, so they will have to do a lot of the single audit stuff. And so we wanted to make sure we had all that covered. So that's the reason why it's a little bit different than what we expected at the beginning, but I think the end result will be what everybody presumed it would be.
Excellent. Excellent. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. I'm just pleased to see this moving forward.
Commissioner Githens?
I, support of them getting their new home. It sounds like it'll be a real addition to our community.
Yeah. Really appreciate the work at Beacon and the staff and the volunteers, and getting this grant has been a huge opportunity. I really like the way that we're helping them achieve this dream, this goal, but supporting their programming so that they can utilize their funds for the new projects. So it's a really exciting opportunity. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the MOU with Beacon Regarding Expanded Service Continuation?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
All right. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-03 Interlocal Agreement Regarding JAG Grant Funds. Fund name, JAG Sheriff. Fund number, 8143, in an amount of $3,804. And just to be clear, JAG is for Justice Assistance Grant.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this is kind of an annual grant that we get. Just as a reminder, this is based upon our violent crime statistics, and the city, the granting agency only wants one entity per county to apply for these grants, and so the city has done that. We actually received this last year, so that's why you'll see that the, on the actual sheet, that the titles and the offices are different than what they currently are. But that's why this kind of fell through the crack a little bit, but I have confirmed with our sheriff's department that the intended use of the funds is acceptable, and it's what they've discussed, so.
Excellent. All right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I guess I'm always surprised at the fact that outside the city limits, there's very little violence that goes on. It's amazing to me because this is proportional, and we get only 7% of the total.
Seven percent of the violent crimes over the last three years in the county versus 93% in the city. It's a, it's a big number. Yeah. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't have anything to say.
All right. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Ordinance 2024-03?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you so much. Next item, would you want to just make a motion to continue?
I'd like to move that we continue Item D, the Correctional Center Collective Bargaining Agreement, until February 21st, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There are just a few little details that just need to be clarified, and overall, it looks really good and really impressive work to get this contract ironed out every, every time. So appreciate that effort from our legal department and from the collective bargaining unit at the, at the jail. Any other comments on that?
Not on that specifically, but it was encouraging a few weeks ago to hear that the jail is now fully staffed.
Definitely good. Good news. Okay. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Correctional Center Collective Bargaining Agreement continuance to February 21st?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Much. Next item, please.
Move approval of Blue Stone Tree for tree removal on Moore's Creek Road and Stip Road. Fund name, Stormwater. Fund number, 1197, in an amount of $108,615.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa Ridge, can you tell us all about it, please?
Sorry.
Oh! Mrs. Tony is here, too. Sorry.
Actually, I'm Kelsey here and our consultant Chad with Lock Mueller Group to give a little bit more information.
Great. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Kelsey Thetonia, MS4 Coordinator, Stormwater Coordinator for the Highway Department. So this is a time-sensitive contract with Blue Stone Tree for the Stip Road and Moore's Creek Road project. As you know, this project, the purpose is to raise two sections of these roads outside of the Lake Monroe floodplain for the purpose of access emergency services for homeowners in those areas where there's extended duration flooding when the lake elevation is high, and they are cut off from public roadways and emergency services for long periods of time. The average is 24 days. We've, over the period of 35 years, that you had 11 events where the lake elevation was high, and they had no access to the roadways, and they needed to use rear yards or boats to get to and from their homes. So this project required an environmental assessment for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. As you know, design started in 2017. The EA began in 2019, was completed in May of 2022. In 2022, we then began the process of acquiring the easements from the Army Corps of Engineers on federal property, and that was completed at the end of last year. So we have an opportunity to begin this project this year if we can begin tree removal before the window for protection of the Indiana bad closes on March 31st. So, so this contract is with Blue Stone Tree for removal of the trees on Moore's Creek Road, which is the portion of road we'll be beginning with first. There are more homes impacted on that stretch of road, and it's a little bit simpler because Stip Road has a small structure, bridge replacement. It'll be a more complex project with retaining walls and things. So Moore's Creek Road will be cleared, and then just a portion of the north side of Stip Road will be cleared so that the utility companies can do their utility relocation all at once. So we will be leaving trees on the southern side of Stip Road, which, again, has a stream in the area and a stream pretty close to the road, so we'll keep those trees in place as long as possible. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and we have Chad Gibson from Lock Mueller Group here to give some more details on project management and our outreach plan, if you're interested.
Great. Thank you so much. Did you want to add anything?
The only thing that I'll add is that any successful construction project has to have a good communication plan. I've been talking with Kelsey on that. Worked with Lisa on the Bicentennial Trail Project last year. We have some mechanisms in place that I think where we can relay pertinent information to all of the affected property owners. Probably like a project-specific email address is something that we're thinking, and with that, we can really get started on that right away, so.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I know that the Parks Department uses Blue Stone Tree for a number of projects, and they've always been very happy with, with that company, so, yeah.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I was pleased to see the plan for replacing the trees that are going to be removed and actually diversifying the environment there a bit more.
Yeah, it's always, this is, this project has been a long time coming in Stormwater, and it's an important one. And it's, it's great to move forward. It's terrible to sign a contract to take trees down, but it's absolutely necessary. And yes, there is a plan. Hopefully, we can get more information on that later, but there is a plan to replace what we've, what we are going to lose. So some hope there. All right. Excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on Blue Stone Tree removal on Moore's Creek Road and Stip Road?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you both for being here, too. Appreciate it.
I'd like to point out, too, that we, all three commissioners sit on the Stormwater Board, and so we have been hearing about this on an ongoing basis for several years.
Yes, we have. We have been, yes. It's not, it's not news to us, that's for sure. All right. So with that, we'll move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-02 Worms Way Rezone.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Drew Myers joining us from planning to tell us all about it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So this is the Worms Way Rezone. It's Ordinance 2024-2, also known as case number REZ-23-3. It's at 7850 North Wadeport Road, and it does include two parcels, Lot A being 6.65 acres and Lot B being 6.21 acres. On December 11th, 2023, the Plan Commission voted six to two to make no recommendation with respect to this petition and forwarded to the Board of Commissioners, and here we are this morning. All right. So the petitioner is seeking to rezone the property from agricultural rural reserve to pre-existing business. It is part of the Worms Way Type A plat that includes both of those lots that I described, and it was originally developed pursuant to a 1995 special exception for agribusiness and commercial greenhouse to allow for the establishment of the Worms Way business. In the 1995 special exception request, it was approved by both the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Plan Commission. It did have some conditions of approval that are on the screen here at the bottom, one through three. And those conditions were a site plan, talking about an existing cemetery, existing and proposed buffering, sign placement, end dot approval, and all the statements being acknowledged by the commitments, as commitments by the petitioner. So the pre-existing business district is a unique business, a unique zoning district, excuse me. So we don't see rezone requests to this district very often. I did include the definition up here on the screen. We can come back to it if we need to, but the gist of it is that it is identified for the purposes of maintaining commercial activities with business zoning while at the same time not allowing for the expansion of new business activity proximate to the location of this district. The expansion of the business, of business is permitted within the lot of record, and those uses are defined by the uses that are available in general business district and limited business district, depending on their level of intensity as described in Chapter 802. So for example, if a use, if a pre-existing use was determined to be So for example, if a use, if a pre-existing use was determined to be medium intensity, then it would be allowed to operate any type of business in the general business district or the limited business district with that same intensity or less. Okay, so in Chapter 802, we don't have a definition for agribusiness/commercial greenhouse. So staff determined that the closest fit to this business description, this use description, was commercial facilities for the sale, repair, and service of agricultural equipment, vehicles, feed, or supplies. That is a land use, and that is in Chapter 802, page 10, and its definition is here at the bottom of the screen. Establishments selling, renting, or repairing, oops, excuse me, machinery or equipment, and supplies for use in soil preparation and maintenance, planting and harvesting of crops, and other operations and processes pertaining to farming and ranching. So this use in the Chapter 802 use table is classified as a high-intensity use. Therefore, rezoning this property to pre-existing business would permit any of the available uses that are listed as either high, medium, or low intensity in the general business or limited business zones. There are a, there are several recent cases that this property has engaged in. In 2019, we had a variance request to add metal fabrication through the use variance process. That was approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, vote of three to two in June of 2019. However, a commercial site plan was never submitted to the Planning Department by the property owner or the petitioner. So that use still remains to this day as a permitted use. It just, we just need to see a commercial site plan filing submitted to establish that. In 2021, there was a rezone request from agricultural rural reserve to light industrial. The Plan Commission gave a positive recommendation of seven to zero in October of 2021, and that rezone request was denied by the county commissioners by three to zero in October of 2021. Then in 2022, we saw several use variance requests. This was to add the use of general contractor to the property. The first one was denied by the Board of Zoning Appeals, three to zero in August of 2022. An amended application was submitted by the same petitioner, and ultimately, that petition was denied again by the Board of Zoning Appeals, three to zero with one abstention. And then the most recently, in 2023, we had a planned unit development outline plan proposal for this site to establish a PUD that would dictate which specific uses would be permitted on the property. Planning staff had recommended denial based on its incompatibility with the comprehensive plan, and the requested uses for that petition are listed on the screen here. Ultimately, that petition was denied, or excuse me, was withdrawn by the petitioner in September of 2023. Their impetus behind that was just the conversations that were held during the Plan Commission hearings, and they were not confident in their planning unit development request. Okay. So here we have some exhibits. This is the existing zoning map from 1996. This is prior to the adoption of the current 1997 zoning ordinance. The colors are a little faded on this map, but the star indicates the subject property, and you can kind of see the shaded green areas. Those are the agricultural rural reserve districts. And we can see a little bit of the limited business districts up here to the north of the subject property. As you'll note, there was no pre-existing business district back in, before 1997. Here we have the original 1997 zoning map. This was the map that was adopted in 1997. And of course, we have, you know, an updated map as well through Elevate GIS and other GIS functions. So you'll, again, you'll see here that the agricultural rural reserve shaded in the lighter green, and then we do have pre-existing business in the pink areas to the north. And then we have the Windsor Private Neighborhood just adjacent to the north and to the east of the subject property. Again, starred with the yellow star. Okay. One interesting item of this petition is the letter from the Monroe County Assessor's Office. So the County Assessor's Office received communication or letters from the petitioner requesting that their property be revalued or reassessed based on the string of failed attempts to rezone or add uses to the property. Reviewing all of the information at their disposal, the Monroe County Assessor and that office submitted this letter, basically detailing that the assessment was going to go down from the numbers here on the screen, about $2,600,000 to now $530,000 approximately. And that was, those changes were made for the tax year 2023, payable 2024. Okay, here we have the current zoning map, a little bit better resolution. This is from our GIS mapping. So you'll see the agricultural rural reserve district here with the petition site highlighted in red. Again, the Windsor Private Neighborhood, we're here in a state residential, and then we have some existing pre-existing business uses to the north. Comprehensive plan has designated it as rural residential. And this map diagram I have here just highlights a few of the businesses nearby. We have Bloomington Auto Parts to the south, Oliver Wineries to the north, and Cook River Tech to the northwest. The next several slides here is going to be images of the petition site, so I'm just going to slowly click through these. You can see the many existing structures on the site. This diagram here identifies the distances from the actual structures to nearby residences in the Windsor Private Neighborhood, and these flags here coordinate two locations that I took pictures. And then if you'll see on the next slides, pictures will have those flags in the corners to identify that's where they are taken from. So this is just to get, give a feel of the buffering of the site and the distance of the commercial site to nearby residential properties. All of these images are in the packet in case you want to review them while we go through the rest. This here is the Monroe County State Road 37 corridor plan. This is from February of 2010, excuse me. And there was some pertinent information in this plan related to the area as well as the site specifically. So here we have a map of the area of effect of the study, the interchange at Sample Road that has been built out since the I-69 completion. And here, I want to draw your attention to some of these items here. This is pulled from the report. And one of the items here in the bottom here, "Until infrastructure is available to support the recommended land uses and an urban community plan is approved, it is recommended that the development in the area be limited by rezoning the area to a low-density land use. To help preserve the rural nature of the area, no new commercial or industrial businesses are to be allowed on State Road 37 in this part of the corridor. Existing commercial or industrial businesses should remain and be allowed to expand within previously developed parcels as needed to remain viable. However, the intensity of the uses shall not be allowed to increase beyond current conditions, and such businesses shall not be permitted to expand onto adjacent properties." So that's just one blurb from this study that was pertinent to the discussion of this particular site. All right. The remaining slides, I believe, are just exhibits from the report. So here we have the petitioner's letter to the Plan Commission stating their requests as well as the history of the site and the improvements that are currently existing on the property. I believe the petitioner is on the call, and essentially, the representative is in the room, so I'm sure they will provide more details regarding this. Here I have the permitted use table for the agricultural rural reserve district. And here I have the permitted use table for both the general business and the limited business districts. A P stands for permitted. A C or CU stands for conditional, and a blank space means that that particular use is not permitted. However, given the determination that the pre-existing use would have been considered a high-intensity use, essentially, all of the listed uses you see here would technically be permitted, and a commercial site plan filing would be all that we need, be required, except for the conditional uses. Here I have the Worms Way Type A subdivision plat. It shows Lot B and Lot A. Here we have a letter of support from Peterson Realty. And we have some letters of opposition as well through the entire process, as well as the history of petitions on this site. The Windsor Private Neighborhood Association, as well as their residents, had a lot to say regarding the petitions. I'm sure some of them may be in the room or online as well that will have comments as well. Okay. So overall, in December, in December 2023, planning staff recommended forwarding this petition with a negative recommendation to the Board of Commissioners based on the findings of fact, specifically its incompatibility with Monroe County Comprehensive Plan. In that recommendation, staff stated that there should be a consideration of this petition site. Under the CDO draft, zoning should be considered by the Plan Commission and ultimately, the county commissioners to identify a suitable zoning district and whether an amendment to the Comprehensive Plan is warranted in this area. Planning staff has communicated to the petitioner that the property could be requested to be rezoned to general business or limited business. The County Development Ordinance, or CDO, map and text is currently drafted to phase out all properties zoned pre-existing business and rezone those sites to either general business or limited business, depending on their current use and intensity. Therefore, a rezone to pre-existing business would ultimately contrast with the goals of the CDO to eliminate the pre-existing business district. And the reason for eliminating the PB zoning district is to avoid any confusion on future permitted uses based on prior use intensity. And again, at that December meeting of the Plan Commission, it was voted six to two to board this petition with no recommendation. I'll take any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Myers, for the presentation. It was very clear and appreciate the way you put it together and provided all of the background. I will see now if my colleagues have any comments or questions. First, we'll go to Commissioner Jones.
Not at this time. I'm, I want to hear what other people have to say about it.
Thank you. Commissioner Githens?
I feel the same way.
Okay. Great. Excellent. So we will now move on to hear from the petitioner or the petitioner's representative. You can either come to the podium or raise your hand on teams. Looks like we do have somebody's hand raised, so if TSD could make that happen. It is Martin Height.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, sir. Thank you for your patience. Please tell us about this petition.
All right. Well, I'm the founder of Worms Way, and my petition says quite a bit, but I do want to make some comments about it. I hope, I hope the three Commissioners have had a chance to absorb this packet thoroughly. But my petition is about equal treatment and fairness. In 1997, a dozen or so properties within three miles of my property were rezoned to pre-existing business without petitions being filed. No reason's ever been given of why Worms Way was not included as a pre-existing business, as it was there in 1995, had a site plan, et cetera. There's other businesses, and is it possible to bring up page 63 of the packet that Drew just discussed? A picture says a thousand words. That would be useful if we could look at page 63.
He is pulling that up now. It's, looks like.
And I was going to ask to bring up the CDO draft map, but this will suffice. This is a limited view, but there, in 1997, there's about a dozen properties that were rezoned to pre-existing business within three miles of Worms Way, north and south of it. Some of those properties have been sold since then. Pointer Sheet Metals is now Farrow Fisher. The, what I think was called the Lighthouse before is rezoned, or is now occupied by Wells Landscaping. And so all I'm asking for is to be treated the same as these pre-existing business owners. There, you know, there's no reason that my property was not rezoned pre-existing business. It clearly was there in 1997, and yet, nothing was done at that time. Some of the properties, and on that page 63, I was, I was going to point out, there's actually properties that are zoned pre-existing business that are vacant land. The one property, which is south of the gas station, not shown on that, on that picture, but there's a 30-acre parcel, 7326 Wayport Road. It's vacant, never had a business on it. It's zoned pre-existing business. There is a parcel at 6427 North Charlie Taylor Lane, 1.06 acres down near Thompson Furniture. Same thing. It's zoned pre-existing business, yet it's never had a business on it. It's vacant property. You know, my property has a site plan and has 60,000 square foot of commercial building located on it, and there's just, it doesn't make any sense. I understand the, the goal is to do away with pre-existing business properties to that designation. Well, it's been 27 years. In the meantime, we could correct this error by allowing my property to be pre-existing business. That allows me to sell it to a business owner that is high intensity or lower. I understand that. But that is, that's the crucible, crucible matter. It's just about equal treatment and fairness. Do you have any questions for me? Do any of the Commissioners have questions for me?
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions for the petitioner? Commissioner Githens?
My only comment is, is that I don't know what the thinking was back in 1997, and I don't know if these other entities made a formal application. I don't know that history, and I'm only worried about today and going forward.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Githens. I'm also curious about what, what intensity level are the other pre-existing businesses in the area?
That would be, that would be, actually be a question for staff.
Yeah, yes. I'm sorry. I am directing it at staff.
That's okay. That's all right. And let's put a pin in that and have Mr. Myers look, look at that while, while we continue. Is it, do you have any other questions for the petitioner?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Does the petitioner have anyone else that wishes to speak on their behalf?
Well, allow me to comment still. Well, if you have no questions for me, I respectfully request that the Commissioners rezone my property to pre-existing business so a viable business can occupy this commercial property. At this time, I believe I still have time left. I believe Mike Carmen is there, and he would like to speak also.
Uch. Does anyone else wish to speak on behalf of the petitioner in the NatU Hill Room or online? All right. So is there anyone who wishes to, well, let's, first, let's go to Mr. Myers to answer Commissioner Jones's question, if you would, about the intensity of uses?
Yes. So looking here, I did some analysis of some sites, so one moment, let me get to these. And so there is a property on 100 East Sample Road that is vacant, that is currently zoned pre-existing business. That particular property is not a real estate property. That particular property is, has been acquired by the state of Indiana as part of the construction of I-69. See here. There's a property at 7326 Wayport Road that is a vacant lot. It is currently zoned pre-existing business. Actually, sorry, that is, that one actually is currently zoned agricultural reserve. My apologies. Let's see.
On the GIS, it's identified as a pre-existing business. On the CDO draft, it's, it's identified as pre-existing business. There's confusion here. It's vacant property, but yet at the same time, the question is the intensities of any of the other businesses. So it may be relevant to talk about the intensity of Farrell Fisher or the general contractor that is north of there, north of there, and his name escapes me at the moment. But they, these, these are existing businesses. You know, it's, it's a gray area when you say, well, it's vacant property. What's the intensity of the business? And that contractor is Tatman Sims in Pettigo. He's the general contractor. It also might be relevant to talk about the pre-existing business of the gas station. I think that's probably medium intensity. The Thompson Furniture, which is a PUD, and there's some discrepancy on that. The GIS identifies it as a PUD. The CDO identifies it as a proposed PUD. That's, those are gray. But if you're going to talk intensity of businesses, you should talk about current businesses in place. Vacant property doesn't have an intensity. It's, and, and again, this huge discrepancy over this 30 acres south of the gas station. That's, that's really gray. I mean, it's identified, bring up the CDO, and it calls it pre-existing business, and bring up the GIS, and it says existing business.
Thank you. Let's let Mr. Myers address this, please. Thank you.
If the, the, the current zoning on the GIS is what we administer today. The draft CDO is a draft. All pre-existing businesses shouldn't have been removed from that draft. They should not appear in there. I don't, I'd have to look back through to see if there were any that were missed. All PUDs that are listed on the draft zoning map come up as proposed because we are retaining existing PUDs that are in effect today within the next CDO draft map. So that is why that they state proposed. They are not being proposed, they're just remaining the same zoning as they are today. So the current draft zoning map that's available on Elevate GIS, as well as other county materials, that is the map that we're going with. And for existing businesses in the county, for all commercial sites in the county, we either have an approved site plan on file, the site has been pre-existing with no change of use since 1997, or the site needs to come into compliance and receive site plan approval. And we are mostly a complaint-driven department. So there are certain sites where the property address does not have a site plan on file, and we're not sure of that particular compliance with the existing zoning ordinance because they could be pre-existing. And until there's a complaint made or they need different permits, that is when we have the authority to bring them into compliance. And I believe the Assistant Director, Tammy Beerman, had her hand raised as well, so she might have more to say on that matter.
But can you address some of the intensity?
Mr. Height? Mr. Height, it's not your turn to speak right now, but we will hear back from you again. So if you would, would mind, wouldn't mind waiting a moment, thank you so much. Tammy Beerman, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I was able to reach a couple of, I was able to look at a couple of those properties and am familiar with them. So Oliver Winery is up there. And Drew, if you're familiar with that, it's near where the Wayport Road is labeled on that map. They are a high-intensity business. Across the street, directly from Oliver Winery is a small, it's a smaller square. That is a utility, and that is considered medium intensity. The giant PB that's, but you can see that's labeled, that property belongs to Cook, I believe. We did a site plan for that. It was an office use, which is low intensity. It used to be an old school. And then to the south, kind of not too far south, but there's this long strand that runs along the interstate. That is owned by a general contractor that was recently approved, and it is a medium intensity use. And then there's the, the bakehouse is right in that corner there, too. And I don't write off hand how what the bakehouse intensity is for that one. So, I mean, we have, it's a very big mix of what those PB zoned properties are. There's medium, high, medium, and low. So there's, there's, it's just a kind of all over place, if that helps.
Thank you.
Thank you for addressing the questions. We really appreciate both of you for your assistance. So next, let's hear from anyone who wishes to speak in, in favor of this petition. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room.
This is Christopher Mj. Good morning, Commissioners. Christopher Mj from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I didn't know if I wanted to, necessarily formally supporting the petitioner, he brings up some good questions, but I just had some comments on, on the process, which is, I think, apolitical, but I don't know if this was the time for it or not. Well, I, Christopher Mj, Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, Monroe County resident. I think one confusion I have in this process is the CDO. When we're using two CDOs, we have no CDOs. And so when we use the proposed one, the current one, it's kind of like when you have two quarterbacks, you have no quarterbacks. And I think there's a confusion there that we're slowing down government until this, this proposed CDO is codified. And I think one thing we need to do is just move forward until that is the case with the current, with the current CDO. And there's really good things in the proposed CDO. Streamlining some of these, some of these zones, I think is going to make it easier, but we're not there yet. And I, and I think it just becomes which map you're, you're looking at for me, the resident, on where we're at right now. So that's the only thing I had to say on that. The petitioner brings up some good questions, and I thank you for your time today.
Great. Thank you so much. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition?
My name is Mike Carman, speaking in favor of the petition. Slow court hearing, I was running, running late, still have to catch my breath after running over here from the Zitlow Center. You know, it's difficult to understand the objections to the zoning. Now, the only real objection that's been thrown up, well, it's not compatible with Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Neither is any other business zoning, pre-existing business zoning up and along the I-69 corridor. All those properties have the same issue, and yet they got rezoned, some to LB, some to pre-existing business. The only other one that I think that I can find that didn't is the Bloomington Auto Parks, and nothing's ever going to happen. Nobody's ever going to pay the seven-figure numbers to remove all those junked vehicles in there. That's, that's there for our lifetimes. But other than that, everybody else got the benefit of rezoning, recognizing their ongoing use, their investment in the properties, the facilities that had been constructed on it. It is compatible with the I-69 corridor plan. Now, that's been mentioned twice during Plan Commission meetings, even Plan Commission member Bernie Gertas raised that issue himself, and nobody's ever really addressed that. But the corridor plan called specifically to preserve these kinds of uses, to not force the removal of business commercial uses, but to maintain those. And why not? Look at, what I don't, you know, there's always attention paid to neighbors, and I understand that. But neighbor comments need to be rational. This use is sheltered and isolated from Windsor Private. Windsor Private, for the most part, those homes built in there, as nice as they are, were built in the shadow of all this being in existence. It didn't stop them, didn't deter them, didn't hurt property values, and yet that becomes the threat, the demands by the neighbors. Don't do anything there, it needs to be ag. That's the only thing we'll tolerate, and that is the neighbor response. That's the only thing they will tolerate are ag uses, which makes no sense on this property. It wastes the property. The traffic pattern can never go into the neighborhood. There's no connecting road. We're a couple hundred feet of separation from residents to this use. There's substantial mature tree buffering between Windsor Private and this, and this property. There's not a rational objection from that neighborhood to this, to this rezoning petition. And would ask you to do it. Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin Height would have phrased that as a fairness issue, how he, he, his property was treated relative to others up and down the corridor, similarly situated as fairness seizure. I say it's a legal issue. It's a, it's a taking, in the purest form, a regulatory taking. You have deprived him by the zoning that's on that property of the, of any reasonable economical return on his property. And there are numerous Supreme Court cases call that a regulatory taking, and that's what we're looking at. And you can undo that. You can undo it based on fairness, which is what Mr. Height has argued and urged. I would suggest you need to do it for legal reasons, too. This is not right. There's no other way to phrase it. This is not right. This property should be rezoned, should be rezoned according with what has been done on everybody else, similarly situated up and down the corridor. This was presented at one time as a PUD with limited uses and some conditions. That got such negative response from the neighbors, from the Plan Commission, including Ms. Thomas as a Plan Commission member, that PUD attempt was withdrawn. It was clear that nobody wanted that. That would have been some kind of a compromise on permitted uses by using, using it as a PUD. Would ask you to approve the zoning petition. It is, as I said, and I'll stuff with this, it's the only right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carman. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Does anyone wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Ensure that you sign in, give us your name. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. Thomas, Jones, and Givens. My name's Andrew Long, and I'm a resident of the neighborhood next to Worms Way. Thanks for hearing our comments. As a Monroe County resident and taxpayer and voter, we're constantly fighting this issue, and we're getting a bit tired of it, to tell you the truth. The neighbors are not against the owner trying to sell his property, but it needs to fit the surrounding area and the use cases. The owner's trying to rezone to PB. If they're granted that rezone, they'll be able to sell to a company like Arnold Asphalt, which was previously denied. And you saw the use cases, there was a lot of different types of businesses that could go in there now under high intensity. The CDO is in the process of changing to ag 2.5, and it seems like the owner is trying to get the zoning changed before it's changed to that, which means he, you know, once it's changed, it would be much more limited for him to, to sell to different companies. The Monroe County Planning Commission has previously designed these, sorry, denied these requests because of incompatibilities with the CDO and the surrounding use case. In the last meeting, in the last planning meeting about the PUD, a member of the commission asked our neighborhood to meet with the owner to come up with some acceptable businesses. And that's not up to our neighborhood to do this. Another Planning Commission member put the question out there, what do we have to do to get this property sold for the owner? And that's, that's inappropriate for a board member to say that. It's not up, it's not up to the county to find a way for the owner to sell at a high price. It's up to the county to protect residents' rights and property values. And so we saw the value of Worms Way has been reduced to $530,000 for tax purposes. I did a check on Windsor Private. I added up all the houses in the neighborhood. Its approximately value is $23.9 million, which is a lot of tax dollars. These are not three-bedroom, two-bath tract homes that they're returning, Mr. Carman said in the last meeting. Okay? These are luxury homes in an estate neighborhood. The Planning Commission members and the, and the commissioners need to forget about trying to make things easier to sell the property for the owner and remember the tax base of the surrounding neighborhoods. Any incompatible businesses will lower our property values. Mr. Carman and the owner talk about fairness. He's had 20 years, 25 years to do this rezone, and he's never done it until now, when he doesn't have any money coming in anymore. He's made tons of money over these years. So the last meeting, the last planning meeting, had a nice speech from the owner, basically blaming our neighborhood and the county for previous decisions made 25 years ago. Okay? It's not our fault, it's not the county's fault that this property is inappropriate for the zone. He needs to reduce his price and do something else. And, you know, this is a residential, agricultural, and rural area, not business and industrial. There are some businesses around, but they're, they're not disruptive. Okay? Mr. Carman calls us whiny and irrational. He said whiny in the last meeting. Today, he calls us irrational. Okay? We're not irrational, we're just trying to protect our families and our homes. So this latest attempt is inappropriate, and I'm requesting that you please deny this rezone request. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you for coming in today and waiting. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? We'll also raise your, keep your hand raised on Teams as well. We'll come to Teams next, and we'll try to alternate. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Brian Booze. I'm a Monroe County resident, in fact, a resident of Windsor Private, the neighborhood nearby. We've talked in various meetings over the last three years about this, a lot of the same concerns, environmental, noise, vapor emissions, ground contamination, all that, that we've mentioned that, not going to go through that again. I just heard that we're against the owner for a business there. We're not against what the property is today. We're worried about what it is going to become as a part of this rezone. That's what we're very concerned about. So all of those previous things, like I just mentioned, you know, those are still in place for us. We just heard that the nearest sort of similar thing would put this in a high intensity. That opens the floodgates, quite honestly. Not against what it is today, but what it certainly will become if that goes through. Mr. Height owned the property. In fact, we just heard in 1995, that property was given its own special ag category so he could do exactly what he wanted to do with his own property, which is great. But that's why it ended up zoned the way it is. It was requested, and he got it in 95, to do exactly what he has done. And over the years, he did business decisions, good, bad, whatever. I think a lot of them were good. It was a successful business. Then he sold the business, kept the property. That was a personal or private business decision, knowing exactly what the property's status still was. Kept all these properties. We just heard 60,000 square feet of property that he put on there, improved it, knowing exactly how it was zoned the whole time. But now, you know, we come along that would like to sell it as a high-intensity business thing so I can get my money out of it. Well, that was a business decision to sell the business, but keep the property, knowing exactly how it was zoned. But this is an effort to shift that burden now, change the rules at the last minute, because now all my previous decisions on why I built it, why I did it that way, oh, now they hurt me. I'm going to shift that burden to the county and certainly to the neighboring areas at the last minute. So I'm against it for that reason. We've talked about consistency and exceptions and all that, you know, no continuity. That is the CDO process. That's why I think the CDO process exists right now, is to reapply consistency in line with the 37 or I-69 plan, in line with everything. The CDO process is that effort to let's get things back to a consistent approach. And we said at the beginning of this meeting, and I was listening, it's a, whatever you call it, a mission statement, whatever, to basically protect the rights of all Monroe County residents. I think that is the CDO. I think that's an underlying thing for why the CDO process came to be, is to realign and do that, not for one or two, but the county. Here's, here's the rules that we're going to apply to the county. And I think trying to apply a very specific, pretty significant exception to that, right now, I think that defeats the purpose of the whole CDO concept. So for all of those reasons, I'm hopeful that you deny this, and I certainly hope you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It looks like we have Lorne Aubin on Teams with their hand raised.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to talk. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to talk on this project. As the previous two individuals have mentioned, we've been through this a number of times. I find it interesting that after 27 years, he is now looking to, quote, "right a wrong" when it's been that long. Keep comments that the neighborhood is against it. In 1995, when he originally submitted a plan for the special use variance to Ag Reserve, the neighborhood supported it. My wife and I moved in in 1999. We built there, knowing that it was Ag Reserve. We knew that Oliver Winery was there. If this was a high and intense use property where Worms Way is, we would not have moved there. So, yeah, that impacts that neighborhood dramatically. I don't know, and it's, I don't know that they've had the opportunity to ask, Joe, who lives there on Sample Gate, as you turn on this Wayport Road, how would they feel about it? How would Oliver Winery feel about high industrial use going into that property? What is the look for them? What is the feel for them? I don't know the answer to that. But I think that this, you have the opportunity to protect not only the neighborhood, but the integrity of Oliver Winery. So, to say he's been treated unfair by the neighborhoods, I disagree with that. There's a, there was a comment that there's a significant tree buffer. Our house, we can see Worms Way. There's really not any buffer. So, with those comments, I'd ask that you deny it, let the process go through with the review, and I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll switch now to, thank you, we'll switch now back to the Nat U Hill Room. If there's anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition?
Hi, my name is Julie Boos, and I live in Windsor Private. And I'm also a real estate agent, and I have shown that property two times. And I've handed you some paperwork that shows how the property was advertised at the time and has been over the years. Mr. Hyatt has stated that, you know, he never could sell this property because no business could be there, and that is just untrue. I showed it to two different companies that could have moved in there with the current zoning, and it would have been just fine and worked out with the plan that is currently available. Mr. Hyatt has never had a real estate agent try to sell the property. He's advertised it as industrial property, which it never has been. So, that's the people who come to him to try to buy it. So, over the years, he has not had any offers on it. And it has to do with the way that he's advertising it. You can't advertise it for something that it's not and expect someone to come in and pay the amount of money that he has for it. He needs to price this property for what it is and what it's zoned, and he would have sold it years ago. I would have liked to have sold it. I would have, I would have loved to have helped him sell that property. The other thing is, is to say that, you know, Windsor Private doesn't want anybody there. Well, that's not true. We have supported it. I know I supported his company. I bought all my mulch and plants from there. I think everybody in the neighborhood did. We had, you know, worked out a deal with him. We helped him get a zoning. We helped provide people to come and do his service so that he could grow his business, and he did. He grew it well. And we were all supportive of that, and we always have been. But this is our neighborhood, and high intensity is, I mean, that is not what we want, because what he wants to do is go right back to his advertising, which has his circled, industrial. He wants to sell it as an industrial property because he can get more money for it, and that is the bottom line. It just has to do, as far as he's concerned, he only cares about what he can get for that business, and he wants the highest amount possible. And in order to do that, it needs to be industrial, which I can't imagine anyone coming into Bloomington. The first thing they see is Oliver Winery in this area. It needs to be something that's welcoming, not just for the Bloomington people, but for the people who are going from Indianapolis to Evansville. We want them to stop here. We want them to come here and want to realize what a great place Bloomington is, and they want to move here. But an industrial site right next to the winery, and, I mean, that kills the whole setting. And I'm hoping that with the overlook of the new zoning, that they take into consideration, what's it going to look like when you're coming into Bloomington? And so I oppose it, and I hope that you will take my consideration in your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. We have somebody on Teams, T. Schnatzmeyer. Would please unmute and share your comment?
There you go. Does that work?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Sorry about that. My name's Todd Schnatzmeyer. I am also a resident of Windsor Private, have been here for about 13 years now. I think my neighbors have covered most of the points I wanted to make very well. I do want to go through a couple of items, though. Rational, we certainly are rational with this. This is our homes. There's nothing, I think, that anyone has said that has been irrational in our arguments. And the notion that we're depriving Mr. Hyde, I think, is really a bit disconcerting. You know, number one, that property was developed for a special use. It was allowed for a special use, and it has been supported by this community, as Julie just said. So, I think those arguments really don't quite meet the threshold that we're talking here about. I also don't think that there's any threshold of hardship in this owner's property. Again, they have owned this property for over, almost 30 years now. I'm sure there have been a lot of depreciations and all the improvements that they've received, and they've operated that business with Worms Way over those years, and I'm sure that that had some good return on investment. Anyone that develops a piece of property like that is going to have a good idea, long-term, what their capital expenditure is going to be and what their proposed return on investment's going to be over the long term. So, I would have a hard time believing that those structures that sit on that property right now haven't already been bought and paid for a long time ago. We keep going back to some of these previous hearings as well, the metal fabrication business that was granted a use variance. That doesn't really set a precedent for me or anyone else in this neighborhood. That was specific to that family-owned business. It is not a blanket statement to say that any metal fabrication business would be acceptable. That was a special variation, that was a special variance that was applied for. Any of the rezoning proposals have been denied, you know, by the county and have been certainly argued against by our community. So, I think those things being taken into account, I believe that this proposal should be denied, and I hope, as Andrew said, we don't have to go back and sit down and go through this motion again in six months. It's getting exhausting. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Commissioners, by rule, the petitioner or the respondent's in negative have 15 minutes to do that. That 15 minutes has expired. However, the ordinance that says that allows the commissioners by majority vote to extend any of the time limits in there, so if you wish to grant more time, that is...
Okay. Our clock was not set that way. Our clock was set for three minutes per person. So, we, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we continue this, because that was not something that we've done before, and we've never set the clock that way. So, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the time for petitioners opposed to this petition to speak.
A second.
Mr. Cockrell, you please call the role on extending time.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Motion to extend time has been approved. Three to zero.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate that, and let's work out this timing issue so that it's very clear what's going on and with our petitions. Anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Please come forward.
Hi, my name's Dave Gent. I also live in Windsor Private. What happens when you come up late in the group is, there's not much more to say than I had, but a couple of comments. You know, there are over 100 people who live in Windsor Private. We play there, we work there, the kids have grown up there, and with Windsor Private potentially moving to a heavy-use industrial complex changes the entire fabric of the neighborhood. As someone said, they move there because of, when do people start moving out because of? And that's got to be a concern to everybody on this committee. Who doesn't move in? What does the neighborhood become? You know, we put up with I-69. We talked to the commissioners when I-69 is being built. We have air pollution, noise pollution, light pollution from that. We had to put up with it. Do we have to put up with this because someone made a personal decision to do something, build something, create a business out of something, and now we just have to put up with that because he wants to change? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mike Hostetler on Teams. If you could unmute and speak, please. And then we'll come back to the Nat U Hill Room. It looks like we have one more after them.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much. Hi, Mike Hostetler, resident of Windsor Private. Excuse me. As David just mentioned, it's coming in late. Everyone's said just about everything. But I would want to just reemphasize the point that we seem to be putting an overemphasis on one man's ability to make a profit, and we seem to be putting money over top of everything else. You know, when you zone, you zone for multiple purposes, and it doesn't always have to be which one will make somebody the most money. Money shouldn't always be the overriding factor of everything. We bought here, as David had just mentioned, in Windsor Private because of everything. It wasn't. It wasn't industrialized. It wasn't congested. It didn't have these things that we're now, we're going to be forced to live with. And so there's a certain amount of, we're tilting the scales on behalf of people with money to make more money. And I'm a capitalist of heart, I guess, as much as anyone, but, you know, the point of it is, is there were some bad business decisions made, and now we all have to suffer. And so he's not, because when you change this to industrial use, you're not just changing his, you're changing all of ours. We're going to lose the agricultural reserve zoning that we have, we bought there for those reasons. We're going to lose that, and it'll be gone forever. There's no going back. So, I just, I just hope that the commission can understand that best use doesn't always mean most profitable use. And while I'm sympathetic to people who have, you know, business involvements, this happens all the time where people make business decisions, and it doesn't help for them. You know, he made a decision to sell the business and keep the buildings. He knew the zoning, he was the one who got the zoning put in place. So, he knew the limitations of that land, and, you know, and lands only valued it what it can be used for. And there are lots of things you can do with Ag rural reserve zone property. Just why make us suffer because of that decision? And, you know, I just hope that the commission can understand that, please, if you can consider putting the environment, I mean, because we have a beautiful environment there. We have foxes and deer and turkeys and all this wildlife, all this fauna, all this wildlife around, and it's all going to be gone, because it will contaminate the entire area. And it just, it just seems like to me, well, once again, you know, everybody, all they can think about here is making money. You know, make money somewhere else. Why do you have to make money in my backyard? I just, that's my problem, and I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have someone else to speak against petition in the Nat U Hill Room?
Members of the commission, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today, and thank you for extending the time. That was good government in action. My name is Eric Cook. I represent the Windsor Private Homeowners Association. I'm appearing this morning on behalf of the association and those among the 38 owners and 100 residents who were unable to appear in person or by Teams this morning, but yet through their association, one of their voices heard. And we oppose a petition. We align with the comments made by those members who were able to appear today, as well as the findings and recommendations of the planning commission staff, and we would ask that this petition be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? I see a hand raised in Teams, but I don't know if it's the petitioner. It is the petitioner. So, we're going to get back to you in a moment, Mr. Hyde. So, at this point, we do want to allow Mr. Hyde the opportunity to respond to the opposition to the petition. So, Mr. Hyde, if you would please, Mr. Cockrell?
And I apologize for not, for not doing this at the beginning of this, but the rules are that the petitioner shall be allotted a maximum of five minutes to conclude presentation of the ordinance. So, there is a timeframe built in our county code.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Cockrell.
May I ask if that is just the petitioner, or does that include his attorney?
Petitioner, his representatives are included.
Okay, so five minutes for everything?
For everything total?
Yeah.
Yes.
And again, just like before, if you guys wish, you can extend the time.
Okay. Thank you. So, Mr. Hyde, you have five minutes. If you wish to invite anyone else as your representative to speak as well, they are part of that five minutes, and you're welcome to begin at any time.
You're muted. You're still muted, Mr. Hyde.
How about now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Yeah, just a brief comment. I want to make sure that everybody understands this. It may be useful, the neighbors especially. The intensity, Oliver Winery is high intensity, has nothing to do with industrial. The property is not being sold for industrial use. It's the intensity level. And those are clearly, those are designations by the county. My property is named high intensity. Oliver Winery is high intensity. That does not make them industrial. Beyond that, the discussion that the business has supported and so on and so forth, no effect of any business that goes in there is going to affect the neighborhood. The wildlife that was there, when Worms Way was there, the same wildlife was there then. We had deer problems. We had, you know, wildlife all the time, and any business that goes in there is not going to expand and, you know, greatly turn into some industrial site. The fear of that is just not well-founded. Yeah, under limited business or general business zoning, which is what pre-existing business would allow, a lot of those businesses are not viable, for the same reason none of the businesses under Ag zoning are viable. They're just not viable. It's not the cost of the property, it's the use and maintenance of the property. In other words, you would not put a Christmas tree farm in there because you wouldn't use 60,000 square foot of building. The cost of the property, you're looking at 10,000 a month, maintenance, overhead, insurance, taxes, et cetera, to maintain the property. So, any, what I call a viable business, you've got to have cash flow, and you've got to have a use for the property. a use for the property. I mean, you're not going to sit there and say, well, I got 60,000 square foot of buildings, but I think I'll put a fruit stand in, or I'll put something in that is not profitable. And no businessperson is going to entertain any thought like that. So the property has not been marketed as industrial. That's a designation by that website. It describes the buildings. These are industrial buildings because of the types of buildings that they are. Anyway, if Mike is available, he can use up the rest of the time. He may have other comments also, but that's the that's all I can say.
Thank you. Mr. Carmen.
Mike Carmen again. Just I'll be brief then. You know, a lot of references to the ongoing effort at the C, whatever you're calling it, your zoning ordinance. I don't want to call it the UDO. I keep forgetting the acronym we're using, UCO. But if you look at the proposed zoning map and that, it leaves it has this as Ag 2.5. So even a chance now under that to reconsider what has been done at this property. The proposal, through your staff and to the extent the planning commission has been involved so far, is to not correct the problem, not to do anything, and to leave it as is. Some would call that spot zoning, because similarly situated properties in close proximity were all treated differently. All of them, except the Bloomington Auto Parts. And that's really the hallmark of spot zoning, treating the property differently on zoning within the context of the area, the neighborhood, without justification. And there is not. There is no justification for what for the zoning on this property. When you look at what decisions were made with regard to every other similarly situated property which received either PB or LB, even the gas station down at Sample Road is zoned to perpetuate that use. Now how does Windsor Private not complain about that? But they don't. They make irrational complaints about this property only. And I won't go over that again. You don't have time for that. And I'll be done here in about 15 seconds. But but there is no harm. Nobody has yet demonstrated any harm emanating from this property to Windsor Private. Not a one. And so the only right thing to do, I'll repeat it again, is this property needs to be rezoned appropriately for what was there. Judy Sharp already told you, you cut the heart out of the value of this property with the zoning classification on it. And you've got her letter in the packet that was presented previously, of the seven-figure loss of value of this property for assessment purposes, because you cannot reasonably use the improvements there under the zoning. And that's good evidence of loss of value. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we have concluded the public hearing portion of this, but I would like to invite my colleagues to make any comments, or if they have any last questions for anyone involved. I'll start with Commissioner Githens.
I'm not the experienced person that my colleagues are with these kinds of things. But I haven't heard any request from any of the other properties for a rezone. And it's only this one. I also feel strongly that it's not. Mr. Height did receive special use variance back in 95, and that still exists on that property. It would sell with the property. And so I'm not in favor of changing what is there at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes. I do not find the residents of Windsor Heights to be irrational at all. I understand that they're attempting to protect their lifestyle, which is perfectly understandable. I, well, basically, I agree with Commissioner Githens.
Thank you. I will just say, as the person serving on the planning commission, that this has come up many times, this property. And throughout the many years, I will commend the residents of Windsor Heights for being tenacious and for speaking at all of these meetings. It's not easy. There are, you know, Wednesday morning meetings with us. There are Tuesday evening meetings with the planning commission. It is, I'm sure, frustrating. We cannot prevent a resubmission of another proposal. So, you know, that's that's just how this process works. That's he's within his rights to ask. And I do appreciate that there have been a few different iterations that have been produced by the petitioner over time. I think I think what's important to understand is a garden supply store with a huge buffer yard in the back is one thing. Adding businesses of a variety of intensities of noise, I would assume new buildings would take over that buffer zone, parking lots would be built, whatever would have to happen. I think part of the issue is that buffer zone. And if there were some way to protect the residents, put something low intensity in the front of the property, so it is facing the highway, not at the back of the property, so that the residents who have been there, who bought their homes with a lawn and garden center there, would find something that's viable and something that would not impede their lifestyle and their day-to-day lives, or reduce their property values. I like the point that was made. This is a gateway area. What do we want? Well, we already have an auto salvage yard. So I think it's important to remember that. We don't want to make that worse. There is a 2019 metal fabrication approval. That site plan has not been submitted. Why not? I wonder about that. Now, I agree that it is a real shame that we have a system in place where it's like our dark box issues with assessment, where the assessment has dropped from 2.6 million to 531,000. I do not see the petitioner changing the value of the property for sale. The property is still listed at 2 million or 2.6.
We don't we don't know how old this is.
Right. But it certainly hasn't been reduced in price to 531,000. Not very fair to the taxpayers from Monroe County, honestly, but that is with he is within his rights to do that. I think there is a real concern about losing that buffer zone. I think there's a real concern about having a business inserted here, which is not compatible with the existing neighborhood. And I always focus on the people who live in the area first when a rezone petition comes before us, because it is their livelihood, their way of life, that will be impacted the most. And and for that reason, I'm going to vote no on this petition. So if we could go ahead and call the roll, please. Mr. Cockrell on ordinance 2024-02.
Commissioner Thomas.
No.
Commissioner Githens.
No.
Commissioner Jones.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, thank you so much. And again, I appreciate everybody for coming out. And your tenacity is noted. We have one more item. And Commissioner Githens, if you could make the motion.
Yes, I move approval of ordinance 2024-05, the U-Hall rezone.
Backing.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Smith from Planning, would you present this item, please?
Yes. Let me share my screen here. Okay. Can you see that on your end?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So, good morning, Commissioners. So this is for ordinance 2024-05. This is a rezone request from general industrial to general business. The purpose is to rezone these properties so that it would allow for a mixed use of automotive rentals and convenience storage. So some background on this petition. In September 2023, a use determination was submitted to planning staff on behalf of U-Hall. And they were inquiring about if their use of the property would be acceptable at 3274 and 3300 West Profile Parkway. So staff determined that U-Hall would best fit under two uses in our zoning ordinance, and those uses being automotive rentals and convenience storage uses. However, they would have to fall under this multi-use category, and that's known as Business or Industrial Center. And that would kind of serve as the umbrella for both uses. So in Chapter 833, which guides the development for the IG zone, that's the general industrial zone, does not have convenience storage as an option, and automotive rentals is not a permitted use. So these uses would not be acceptable in this type of zone. However, in Chapter 802, which guides the development for the GB zone, the general business zone, does have convenience storage and automotive rentals as permitted uses. And the Business or Industrial Center is a category, again, that would allow for a combination of both of those uses at this location. So this is just kind of the definition of general business district. So essentially, it is a zone that does allow for higher intensity commercial uses. And those are usually kind of emphasized on access to major roadways. Here we have some definitions of the uses. So Business or Industrial Center is a multi-use category that falls under the Business and Personal Services, Retail and Wholesale Trade, and Manufacturing, Mining, Construction, and Industrial Use categories. So essentially, all of the uses that fall within those separate categories could, in theory, be combined under this single multi-use. And then, of course, have the definitions of automotive rentals and convenience storage. Happy to come back to these definitions if the commissioners would like. So we just have some maps here from our GIS software. So we have the location map and the site conditions map. So primarily, this site is relatively flat. You will notice that on the right side of the screen here, we have the North Sunrise Greetings Court. And that is a in the near future project proposal by the Highway Department to extend an overpass here. So the lines here will shift a little bit. But the Highway Department can, of course, comment on any concerns regarding that expansion. So under the CDO, the County Development Ordinance, currently, we are designating this area as predominantly being heavy industrial, and that's evident on the left side of your screen. And then on the right side of your screen, you have the current zoning map. So pretty much this entire area is categorized as being general industrial. You have some city zoning to the east, which is primarily commercial in nature. And then you've got some PUD zoning to the south. So the comprehensive plan identifies this area as being mixed use. So essentially, mixed use means that it allows for a greater flexibility in the terms of uses. And that can vary in different forms, such as scale, character, or a different mix of uses, also location, access, et cetera. Also, further discussions about the comprehensive plan, this is known. This is located in what is known as an employment district, also known as West Side Development. So this district kind of extends from the north Third Street Gateway, extending generally to the State Road 46 area, and is categorized as being employment in nature. So this would include existing office space, industrial flex buildings, essentially being used to accommodate additional infill and redevelopment of the areas. And it is also in a what is known as the Tax Increment Finance District, also known as TIF for short. So this district it serves the more industrial slash office kind of mixed development. And staff also believes that this would be compatible with the surrounding area. So per the request made by the Plan Review Committee, this rezone petition was taken to the Redevelopment Commission on January 4, 2024. Staff had two questions for the RDC members, the first one being the use of the property as defined in the staff report, but also the rezoning of the property, which allows for a large number of commercial uses at these locations. So in summary, the members of the RDC stated that they would prefer uses that offer high wages, has aesthetically pleasing buildouts, and employs a lot of people. So the RDC did not see an issue with the rezone to GB, or the proposed use being that automotive rental and convenience storage combination, and would ultimately like to see the property put to use rather than be vacant as it currently is. And much of their discussion revolved around the aesthetics of the proposal. So with permission from U-Hall, I did obtain some examples of some buildings that they have in other cities throughout the country. These are not set-in-stone designs, but it should provide at least kind of an example of what they are looking to do at this location. And the RDC did mention that if U-Hall did pursue architectural designs such as these, they felt that if, for whatever reason, the current proposed use of the property ceased, and a new owner wanted to move in, that these buildings could be easily refurbished for a different use. So currently, the IG zone is limited to this list of different uses. Some are permitted outright, some are conditional. I believe it comes out to about 25, 26 different uses. So if the rezone were successful, then we are talking about a transition to a much greater number of uses in the general business zone. And I did a quick calculation before my turn here, and I calculated roughly, give or take, about 171 different uses. So that would greatly expand the number of permitted uses at this site. And I'm totally happy to come back and look at these if the commissioners would like. Next up are the design standards. So comparable comparing general industrial and general business. General business has overall a reduction in the design standards compared to general industrial. You can note that in the reduction in setbacks, reduction in lot width. There is a reduction in height. So general industrial does allow for taller structures, but general business does decrease that. But overall, general business is more flexible in that regard. This is a conceptual site plan that was submitted on behalf of U-Hall. So the RDC did note that they would prefer to see a redesign or restructuring of the site plan. U-Hall is amendable, stated they are amendable to that, primarily in the sense that they would prefer that parking be in the back of the lot rather than the front, to allow for a more aesthetically pleasing view of the lot. rather than the front to allow for a more aesthetically pleasing view of the lot. These are just some brief department comments. Kelsey Thetonia, MS Board Coordinator from Monroe County, simply stated that regardless if this is general business or general industrial development at this site is subject to the Drainage Board approval. So no matter what happens here, if staff gets a site plan, it will have to go to Drainage Board, and they will review that and provide comments. Ben Ayers and Paul Satterly also provided comment, essentially stating that there are two existing driveways here. One does not have to be removed, but otherwise, development should primarily be limited to one existing driveway. These are just some site photos of the map that was taken by staff. And this is the Pinnacle Business Park Major Subdivision plot, specifically honing in on the Lot 6 and Lot 7. So that's at the top right there. And this plot actually does factor in the Sunrise Greeting extension here. So on January 16, 2024, planning staff recommended forwarding a positive recommendation to the County Commissioners due to the compatibility of the comprehensive plan. The Plan Commission did vote at this meeting 7 to 0 to forward that positive recommendation to the County Commissioners. And I believe that concludes this presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. Questions for staff, Commissioner Githens?
Not at this time. I would like to hear from those who support and oppose the petition, so.
Commissioner Jones?
I feel the same.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so we'll begin with petitioner, petitioner's representative. If you'd like to come to the podium here in the Nat U Hill Room.
Why they do that, I think maybe a good time that I kind of go through the ordinance on the, on the timing of these things. The petitioners have an unlimited time to make their presentation, and then you guys ask questions. And then anybody who is supportive of this would have up to 15 minutes, three minutes per person. And then in opposition, again, would have that same 15 minutes and three minutes per person. And then it would come back to the petitioners for a five-minute end of conclusion to their presentation.
Rebuttal or summary?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning Commissioners and staff.
Thank you for your patience.
I'm not going to need all the time. My name is Jeff Stefani. I'm a vice president for the U-Haul Company. Sean did a great job explaining this. So we are looking to redevelop this roughly 13-acre parcel. We have a bunch of different uses, and it was tricky trying to figure out what worked best, how to make our uses fit. So we are proposing to do a three-story, multi-story self-storage facility, a 15,000-square-foot warehouse, as well as our traditional truck and trailer sharing. U-Haul was founded in 1945. It's a need-based business. It's a family-owned operation that is still owned by the same family, still ran by the same family. This is not a franchise. We build, we hold, we sit. We, we put a lot of effort into where we go, blending in communities. Obviously, I need the community's support, or otherwise, I'm, I'm out of business. So we do a lot of behind-the-scenes work to pick our locations and where we're going. And I believe this is a use that is needed in this area. We're happy to come to the county. We've had some great meetings. The Redevelopment Committee meeting went really well. Planning Commission went really well. As Sean mentioned, we are open to, you know, any comments, advice, you know, making this work, making it fit, making it blend. I've done these quite a bit. We're really into, you know, repurposing if possible, but we just haven't had that opportunity in Bloomington. And this spot works really well for us. We got a great owner. Everyone's pushing for this. So I hope you guys see it that way. It's a, it's a need base. The community doesn't have it right now. And I, I promise you, the, the stats say that. Every year, we're, we're struggling in this area, every single year. And this will solve it for, for now. So that's all I have. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Jones, any questions for the petitioner?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Githens, questions for the petitioner?
Well, I had actually written down how many stories, but you've already answered that, that question with it. And are you okay with the parking at the back and the fact that there would be no new driveways and things like that?
Yeah, so we're really kind of early in the concept here because of this meeting. So I, I needed to get zoning first. And yes, we are, we're going to take all the feedback from the Redevelopment Committee. Those folks were really, really nice and really open. So we, we plan on working hand-in-hand with that group to figure out what works best for the lot. But the, the items they brought up, I see no heartburn at all with trying to develop the property. The, the property does have some restrictions on it that makes it complicated, too. You know, there are a lot of uses that aren't allowed on this property because of the property itself. So I know there's some areas on the property that can't be developed. So we're going to have to work around that. But to answer your question, no, I believe we're going to be able to satisfy what, what was brought up.
Thank you so much, thank you. We will have you back in a moment. Appreciate that. I obviously don't have any questions. So let's hear from anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition. Please raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room.
Good, good morning. My name's Dave Harstad. I am a representative of the site. I've worked on this site for better part of 15 years, trying to get it put back into productive use. Worked, had great relations with the county to try to get the road through it. And like you, I have a vested interest in this, this property being something that the community can be proud of, and that's something that's beneficial to the community. And so I just want to give a little bit of color rather than just sort of giving you a sales pitch. So over the years, the, the inquiries that I've gotten on the property, just given the location of the property, there's not a map pulled up, but, you know, I could go around the area here and, and talk about the different types of industries and businesses that want to be in this location. So I've tried, over the years, tried hard to sell it, the site, to, I pitched it to Cook. I've pushed it to Catalin. I've pitched it to Baxter. And for a variety of reasons, based on the shape of the site, and locate those people wanting to be proximate to their own campuses, et cetera, the site has not been a site that's been on the list for expansion for some of our, what I call, base industries. These people that create jobs, you know. It has, however, been highly attractive to our service industry sector. And as I explained at the Plan Commission meeting, I think it's important to understand companies like electrical supply companies, HVAC supply companies, et cetera, which are very attracted to this area here. We now have great access because of the Profile Parkway extension. We have retail there as well. And the feedback that I've gotten from the market over 15 years for this site is what, is that there is a high demand for, because of the growth we've seen in this community for Indiana University, people moving here, people needing storage, et cetera, that there's been, these supply companies and these service industries are growing. And so we need places. This is a transitional area. And this, in my opinion, is a perfect place for this type of use. I will also add that, you know, in terms of the zoning, you know, staff has worked very hard on this. This use is really close to being a permitted use in this. And so we went through a use determination process and understandably, the staff said, eh, let's get a, let's do a rezon on it. But this isn't, you know, we're not taking this from, you know, a business use to apartments or, you know, something like that. We are, the need for this rezon is a, is a close call. I think it could be, could be categorized as a business center, et cetera. You know, maybe some other uses. McAllister, for example, is a very similar type use. It fell under a use that's permitted under the IG zoning. So the point is, is it's, this is, this is not a wholesale change in, in use. This is really, really close what these folks are trying to do. Lastly, I'll just say Warren Kutchall, the owner of the property, has been highly engaged with the county. He's done, you know, he's, he's given land, or he swapped land, I should say, to provide for the Sunrise Greetings Overpass. He's worked, you know, he's spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on drainage improvements. He's cleaned up the property. Some of the things that he's done are maybe not noticeable, the legal things, just to prime this thing for development. And so he's worked hard. He's been highly invested in it. And I think we've got a great user for the site. It'll be a, a great use for the community, and I'm hopeful that you're supportive of this rezon. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Try to limit your comments to three minutes, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon Commissioners. Randy Cassidy, I'm a member of the Monroe County Redevelopment Commission. But thank you for that appointment. Taking consideration, this property, which we all know has some environmental history, and it is a brown field of sorts. Now, in this particular, these gentlemen have came up with a plan that will put this property back into productive use, be able to increase our tax base, and pay into the TIF in order to continue the redevelopment of the area that we've set forth. While, of course, we would always like higher-paying jobs and, and those things that employ more people, we have to look at the realities of what this is and where it's at. And the proposal they've brought and had discussion at the Redevelopment Commission and committed to some of the things to forward move, parking if at all possible, and to make the most aesthetically pleasing building, seems to fit in with the vision of what we have in this area from a redevelopment standpoint. As they follow through with the things and said that they were working with us, I think long-term, this will be a good project for what we have for the area. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy, and thank you for your service on the Redevelopment Commission. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Again, you can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Being none, we'll go back to Mr. Stefani if you have anything you wish to add. You have up to five minutes.
I don't have anything to add, so I appreciate the comments from those gentlemen. No, I, I mean, it is what it is. I, I told you guys our intent and the plan. I, I think, I think you guys will be proud to have us. It's something that we've been not neglecting, but it's been a struggle to get in this area for, for years. And like I said, we're taxing the city with the amount of students that we deal with, regular consumers. The growth is just huge, and we're struggling. So this, this will help us, it'll help the community, it'll help the folks in the, the town, and, and that's it. I just hope you guys see it as favorable as I do. So we'll make you proud.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Come back for final comments. Commissioner Githens, any final comments?
Well, I drove out to the, the site, and I think that this use would fit with what I see out there. I don't, I don't have any problem with that at all. And because of the work that Ms. Ridge and our Highway Department has done out there, I think that the accessibility for these kinds of vehicles is really good at that location.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones, any comments?
Yes, I'm well aware of a big need for this use in our community. There are times when it's pretty much impossible to acquire anything to help move anything with. So yes, I, I am very, it's a good location for it. It makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. I'm going to say that I was the one that said, but wait, what does the Redevelopment Commission think about this? When we were hearing this in Plan Commission in the early stages, because this doesn't seem to fit at all what we developed this property for. This is not, this is supposed to be light industrial, potentially heavy industrial. This is a redevelopment area. This is not what's supposed to be here. And to my surprise, the Redevelopment Commission said, heck yeah, this fits. So I'm going to go with the experts. I'm going to go with the experts. And no, I think, I think, I appreciate the greening of the business that's, that's occurred and that's included in the packet, for those who wish to see that. I think there are a lot of benefits to having U-Haul here and having this kind of facility. I just didn't think this was the right place for it. But I'm, I'm going to defer to the Redevelopment Commission. What I don't want is for light industry to come into us and say, but we don't have anywhere to go. Yes, you do. There's still plenty of spots left, right? So, so please, you know, utilize this space well. I'm sure you will. But I, but I agree that having that infrastructure in place is key, and I'm really appreciative of all the work that's happened to get us to this point where we can do this. So it's all good. All right, with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Cockrell if he please call the role on ordinance 2024-05.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. All right, we do have an appointment.
Yes, I would like to move that we appoint Don DiOrio to the Board of Health. This would be with a term ending December 31, 2027.
Second?
We have a motion and we have a second. We appreciate her efforts so far on the Health Board, and, and we look forward to seeing her continue in that role, and thank her for her application to be reappointed. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the appointment?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
All right, thank you so much. I'm going to run through the announcements fairly quickly today. So there is free COVID testing available at the Monroe County Health Department, 119 West 7th Street, also at the County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive. There are also vaccines available at the Miller Drive location, RSV for adults over 60, flu vaccine, and the COVID booster. We are still accepting applications for all boards and commissions. Go to co.montreal.in.us for more information. And we do have virtual office hours via Teams each month. There are six different opportunities to meet with us one-on-one, to share your ideas. Go to the calendar at co.montreal.in.us and take a look. The next blood drive will be held Thursday, February 15, 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and Friday, February 16, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's in conjunction with the Red Cross and at IB Tech Shreve Hall. Go to redcross.org for more information. We also ask residents to consider signing up for our Resident Alert System for weather, health, and other emergency, emergencies and updates. Please go to co.montreal.in.us and click on the megaphone to sign up with spring quickly approaching, never quick enough. It's important to think about how you will plan to deal with severe weather. And it's a good way to get started is to be aware. Also, please note that we are still accepting applications for the Rural Housing Repair Program. If you are low and moderate income and you are living in your home, so this is owner-occupied residence only, outside the city of Bloomington, and you need some basic repairs, HVAC, plumbing, electrical, carpentry, foundation, roof, windows, doors, please contact your township trustee to apply for this program. And for residents of Perry Township outside the city of Bloomington, we ask that you contact the Commissioner's Office directly instead for an application, to start your application for that program. I will note that we are not going to be meeting next week. I will note that we are not going to be meeting next week, December 14, I'm sorry, February 14. It sounds like December, February 14. But we will have our next meeting on February 21 at 10:00 a.m. right here in the Nat U Hill Room. We do have a work session agenda. Can we come back at 12:25?
Sure.
Okay, great. We're going to come back at 12:25 for the work session. In the meantime, thank you all for being here. Thank you for your patience, especially the last petitioners, and wishing you a good day. We are adjourned.